Thank you.
Shelly, you didn't sign these.
Yeah.
You think?
I don't think so.
Hopefully.
Overcome.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Sorry to make you wait out there. Um, we've already opened up the meeting, so I would please like to rise up and welcome you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, student and staff recognition. That's part of the meeting.
So tonight, first of all, thank you, guys, for all coming. Tonight, we celebrate the Pontigan's at Middle School Northern Division Champions. Boys, we celebrate your hard work and your dedication to your sport and to your teammates. Congratulations. You've made us so very, very proud. How many of you are eighth graders? So Mr. Ferns is really happy about you guys coming up next year, right? To the high school. Congratulations. So we're going to call you up, and we got this beautiful certificate that Ms. Fratz made for you. Okay? Let's start first. Let me introduce the two coaches, Jeff. Liam Maru?
LaRue.
LaRue?
Yep.
Here's a certificate for you.
Thank you.
And Coach Matt Mcatee. Okay, first up, Jake Almeida. Congrats. Nice. You go down the fifth row. He's also a unified player. Shane Arnold. Ethan DeMoser? Not here. Who? Okay. I'm just going to call up the ones that aren't here. Colin Etheridge, Logan Glow, a favorite of mine. Levi?
Hicks.
Hicksating?
Nope, just Hicks.
Just Hicks. Brendan Kelly, Jamison LaRue, and now Adam Mcatee. Congratulations, sir. Andre Mendez? Not here. Max, Max Povello? Noah Sackle? Congratulations, Noah. Alexander?
Salazar.
Salazar. Not here. Jude Silva? Not here. Connor Turcot? Congratulations. Ethan Turcot? Congratulations, Ethan. Austin Engleton? Engle? Congratulations. Michael Fields? Not here. Luca Grissini? Cade McKenny? Congratulations, Cade. Grant Ratto? Not here. Jace Wright? Congratulations, Jace. Kayden Young? Walter Rivera? Okay. Congratulations, boys! Now, somebody filled me in. When was the last time this happened at Pontigan's at Middle School? What, what? Wow, twenty? Ten years ago? That's something.
That's Walter.
Walter, come on up. Congratulations, Walter. There we go.
Thank you very much. Thank you all very much.
Oh, you know what? We can get them up yet?
Yeah, I think I can figure it out. Do I want to say something? Yes, of course I do. No, I want to thank, uh, thank the parents, thank the kids. So we started out, you know, it was hot. We had to take a couple of days off because of the heat, and then we went in the rain, it went cold. Uh, we had a good run. Uh, we got to playoffs, and we did pretty well, so a great run. We had great support from the parents. And the athletic deprive was fantastic. It's a great to hear from Mr. Joyce and Mr. Val. They're awesome. Uh, we had a good run, and, uh, after everyone's moving on, I'm moving on. So good luck to those who left, and the eighth graders, good luck next year. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody for coming. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. First of all, Happy New Year. This was such a great way to start a new year. So thank you, everyone, for coming and bringing the kids to be celebrated tonight. It's such a great way of us for us to thank them. So thank you. I'm going to say now, we're going to continue our meeting. Please, if you would like to get up and meet, we could do so now. Otherwise, you can enjoy the rest of our meeting. Thank you so much, guys. Thank you.
Happy New Year.
All right. I'll make a motion first. Um, election of co-chairs and vice chair.
I would like to make a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Thank you, Aaron. Yes. Um, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions.
Do you want to report up?
Um, during executive session, we discussed homeschool legal advice and job performance of individual. All individuals were notified prior to the meeting. Um, one vote was taken in the affirmative for homeschool. And that's all. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to nominate you, Shelley Peza, for...
Six.
For?
Yeah, I made the comment. I started.
For co-chair of Foster Gloucester Regional School Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. I abstain.
Madam Chair, I move to nominate Cindy Joyce as co-chair from Gloucester.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions.
All abstain.
Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate the support. Annual appointment of clerk. I make a motion to nominate Kyle.
Vice Chair.
Oh, Vice Chair. Oh, sorry. I was on a roll. I make a motion to nominate Brendan Mara as Vice Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you. Okay, now, I'd like to appoint Kyle Fratz as clerk of the Foster Gloucester Regional School Committee.
Second.
Kyle, you up for the challenge again? Thank you. You're doing a great job. We're very lucky. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. All right, motion carries. All right, um... Appointments to subcommittees. Budget. Um, right now, who is on the budget committee, Kyle? Pat?
Can you guys just raise your hands when you're down, only because?
Does anyone else want to be on it, and we could step down, or... Amy, do you want to be on the subcommittee?
Yeah.
All right.
If there's space for it, then, yeah.
Yeah.
We just need somebody from Gloucester.
Oh, well, Brendan's on it from Gloucester. So, all right, so I will step down, so Amy can get on the budget subcommittee. So who is it? That? Amy?
So it's Pat? Amy left.
So I make a motion to appoint Amy Ferreira, Pat Henry, Brendan Mara, and Beth Keeling to the budget subcommittee.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. All right, um, wellness. Okay. Eileen? Raise your hand if you want to be on the wellness. I do, too.
I hate it.
Who's on it? Me. Anybody else want to be on? I tried to get Amy to spearhead. I just don't have time. It's right afterwards, because you've got to meet when the teachers, right after school. And it's just, I don't have the time. Is there anybody that would like to be on?
I can't be there at 2:30. That's the thing.
I know. That's the problem.
I was doing it, and then the time switched, and then I just can't.
I know. What if you change, what if you change the time based on your schedule?
I don't know that they would, they probably wouldn't want to come if they had to leave and come back, right? So, I don't know.
What time could you be there? What time do you have the Gloucester meeting usually, 3:30?
That one's at 3:45.
After school?
Is it high school or middle school or both?
It's both.
It's at the middle.
It's at the, it's at the high school, but it's both, um, both buildings.
Both participants.
Do you want me to reach out to the teachers for involved and see if they can do, I mean, it's what, four times a year? How many times a year do you do it?
You have to legally do it four, right?
What if we just, what if I just reach out to the committee members and see if they can do an evening?
Or after four o'clock?
Or after four o'clock.
After four o'clock, work for you, Amy?
Possibly. I don't, I don't want to do it by myself. That's...
No, I know.
So...
I'll help you. I just can't. Certain times of the year it's just hard. That's the problem for me right now. I just... I have to do more. My mom's...
Can it be a rotating member? Or does it have to be?
Rotate, maybe? Well, let me ask a question. My stepdaughter has become this little school nurse, so could I sit on that wellness committee because she's part of...
Yeah, you're not voting on anything because it comes forward to the whole committee.
Yeah, it comes as no vote, and all subcommittees would recommend to the whole committee.
So you...
Why we don't have the post minutes, we have to advertise to me, we don't have the post minutes. I mean, if you're desperate for somebody, I'm available, but it's not anything I feel like I have a, you know, a background for.
My only background is I grow vegetables. That's my background. That's the extent of my knowledge here.
I mean, I heard that Amy was interested, but the time might be off.
Yeah, so if we could reach out. So can we, can we table this subcommittee for now till the next, is that okay with you, Amy?
Yeah, to discuss it, yeah.
Yes.
That's fine.
Yes, please.
So let's take... We're not appointing now, right?
Yes. All right, capital projects. Right now, please raise your hands. Who's on capital projects? Aaron, Brendan, Beth, and Cindy. Okay. Who would like to be on capital?
One, two, three.
So Cindy, do you mind stepping? First of all, you have, put that hand up. Put your hand up. Okay. If he goes, I'll step down, but if he's not... What, if he goes? He has to be there. No, he has to be on. Yeah, because he knows that he's a, yeah, he has the background that we need. Yeah. All right. If you want, if someone else wants it, I would give it up, but if no one else wants it, I'll stay on. So Pat wants it. Okay. So you want it, so I'll step down. All right, so I make a motion. Uh, listen. I just want to make sure that he's on it because... He's he. I like, I like him in the meetings. So I make a motion to nominate Beth Ke, to appoint Beth Keeling, Pat Henry, Aaron Dupuy, and Brendan Mara to the capital project subcommittee.
You will never get up that committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. Policy. Who is it now? Please raise your hand. Does anybody else want to be on it? That's not on it. Eileen would like to be on it. Would anybody like to step down? All right.
Yeah, you're in the lot.
So I make a motion to nominate Eileen Cook, Amy Ferreira, Aaron Dupuy, and Mark Rizzo to the policy subcommittee. Second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions. Grant Oversight Committee. Does this exist yet?
I didn't even know we had one.
No, well, we discussed it, but there's really no grants out there that we need.
So is there anybody on the committee?
Yeah.
And I'm on it also. There were the three of us, Beth, Pat, and me.
But then that grant, that was a great concern.
Mental health grade?
Went away.
The girl left, and then money basically spent.
All right.
Do we need that committee then? No.
All right. So do we need to make a motion to dissolve this committee? All right, no.
So let me, just, just to clarify, this is for existing grants, not for future grants, correct?
Any grants that the district...
Existing, though.
These are the grants that existed and nobody went away.
Exist, okay, gotcha.
So there, these are grants that we weren't hands on the money of, so that's why there was a concern.
Right, I remember.
So if we're hands on the money, I don't think there's much concern because we can see the paper trail. With the other ones, they were just giving us money here and there. Does that make sense, Amy?
Yep, thank you.
Charter review subcommittee. Is there a subcommittee for this yet?
Aaron and I, I had asked.
Yes.
And then you kind of kicked it down the can, and now I think you brought it up again because if you wanted to change, what was it that we said we needed to look at the charter?
I think we weren't sure about going out to bond for the, like, complex.
And I also know that Marion said, I believe during one of our, um, uh, committee meetings, that our charter is a mess. So I thought that it would be great to have...
Clean it up.
A committee in order to clean it up.
All right, so who's on it right now?
No one.
No one.
All right, so who would like to be on the charter review committee? Aaron, Pat Henry, anybody else? Really? You sure? Eileen? Okay. So Aaron, I make a motion to appoint Pat Henry, Eileen Cook, and Aaron Dupuy as... Anybody else? For the charter review subcommittee.
Second.
And we want, and we made sure that it was going to, just to review the existing charter, we weren't going to go down the road of, like, total, uh, re- dualization.
Correct. It's just in order to clean up the language that's currently in that charter.
Want some nuts?
She's already nuts.
All right, so we're good? Do I get a second for that? No, say second. Second.
Oh, I seconded it.
Oh, you did? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions.
So who is it? Just tell me again.
It's Aaron, Eileen, Pat. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the open meeting on December 5th, 2023.
Second.
All discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain. Yeah, so Eileen, you abstained, too. Were you here in December? So who wasn't? I wasn't here, Amy wasn't here?
I was here, yeah.
All right. So seven, two. Okay. I make a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session meeting on December 5th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Same, too?
No. So were you here for executive session, Brendan?
I came in late.
Okay, so seven, zero, two, yeah. All right. I make a motion to approve the bills listed for December 1st, 2023, in the amount of... In December 22nd, 2023, in the amount of $902,380.35.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Was there any, um, questions about, sorry, Pat? Yeah.
You know, I mean, I, I don't know if, if all of this... It just seems to be a lot, like, awful lot of just spending, like, just checks that are out there. I don't know.
One thing, for what it's worth, it's been an eye-opening experience for me. What Walt kind of like helped me go and like sit down and start going through the bills. It's really been eye-opening, and one of the things I never really appreciated until I started to do that, was the amount of consumables there are. Like, I just never really appreciated that at school, right? Like, it makes sense, like, there's materials and stuff that they just get used. And there's, you've got to have a stockpile, because like, not having, like, pens or whatever.
Toilet paper.
Toilet...
Paper towels.
Like, it's not an option. So it is pretty interesting how much is just stuff that we need to use, right? Like, it's part of what keeps the program going. The other one that I think is interesting, it's maybe not tied into that, is that we need to start tracking the fuel oil and some of those consumables. And different senses, even that it might not weigh in soon, which is anticipated, that we're going to see an uptick in that.
Because the wood is still not, kind of...
It's pretty consistent month over month, uh, for what it's worth. But it is, there's just a lot. There's a lot that's used, you know, like... I don't think it's necessarily, like, I don't say that in a sense that it's like there's overspending. It's more just, it, I have a more healthy respect for the amount of materials that's required to fuel that. I'm sure there's a little waste in it, too.
Anything else? Yeah. So Pat, is there anything that you see in particular that you're like?
Yeah, well, I brought something up to us.
Oh, good. Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I'll, I'll shoot you a note next time I go in. Like, I go in, like, monthly with Carrie, and he's very nice. He's possibly the next spin on earth.
I do, Nick Gloucester.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that's funny because Gloucester is one of those, like, gross, like, smaller companies.
It's pretty breathtaking here.
A thousand dollars a month, you know, and you look at this, it's like, why is it like four times?
I mean, just, just our, our heating setup in this building.
Yeah.
This building, $227 per feet, our heating plant is at one end of the building. We're losing 20 degrees of heat just from circulating the roof. We're probably pumping the water in miles. I mean, it's just not a good setup. Just the waste going down that back. We should have a boiler and one in the building.
Mm-hmm.
Treat it as two separate buildings the way it once was. I mean, if you want to cost efficiency.
For the building this big, you should not have one heating system. Absolutely not.
It's not, it's not an efficient setup the way it is. I mean, it's just... Our building, that, that heat loss just in the connector hall is...
Overwhelming.
That's a good... Right, I mean, it's just not a good setup. I mean, we're going for certainly more of it. And doing this efficiency, nothing else, or that's all we're having, definitely.
But I think to, to add to that, and I appreciate the fact that they're looking at the bills. I think that's extremely important for you to understand where the spending goes, especially as you move into the budget process. You know, keep in mind, too, there are 930 students and over 110 or 1500 people. So we have, you know, a pretty good amount of, of people, um, in and out. And so we are larger than, than the elementary schools, and some of, some of the money that you're looking at is also payroll and pension and that stack is done as well. But keep in mind, any budget that begins with two on this is, um, is a different fund. It's not the general fund that we've been, that we've budgeted for or come from. Not all of them are not budgeted. Some are grants that you can see have been included there as well. So just to be, you know, and I think, I appreciate what you said, that it's important to understand the process, and there are a lot of consumables. It takes a lot to have a lot of people here. But I appreciate that you're looking at it as well. I think it's helpful for you to understand how much is spent per month, so you can also understand the budgeting process and where we are with that.
Absolutely.
So thank you. I don't know if there are any, like Brendan said, any specific questions that kind of jump out, or...
All right, um, so that passed. Director of Finance report, budget and finance. Skip, no, you're next.
Um, just a quick audit update. They've, they've started working on the, um, draft financial statements, so everything is going good. And as you'll see later, Renee and I have been working on the budget. We've been interviewing for the human resource position. I need somebody in there sooner rather than later. And just to, just to speak to Pat's comment. I know it's a big number going out, but I mean, we're not digging ourselves into a hole. Pretty much, um, on a monthly basis, we spend a little less than we bring in, so we're not... I know it, it's a lot, but...
Amanda, is Mary King and Diane Brennan still working with you on a regular basis? Are you feeling comfortable in the business office? How, how are you transitioning?
Um, Diane was very helpful in the beginning to get the budget going. And she's, she's kind of stepped back and said, just call me if you need me.
Beautiful.
Um, Mary is still helping with, um, we've got the big, you know, the food service RFP and the audit RFP, um, which is, you know, brand new to me. So I definitely appreciate her help there. She's not... She's, and she's helping with the audit as well. So she is pretty involved, but, um, we have a meeting next week to kind of sit down and go over things and, and look at where she can start stepping back.
Good. So you're feeling comfortable with the transition?
Yes.
Beautiful. That's, I want to make sure that you're comfortable, that we're giving you the guidance that you need, that you weren't just thrown in blindfolded.
I appreciate that.
I don't know, she wasn't thrown in blindfolded, but she has a...
Yeah. No, a lot of it is, is new to me, you know, because I came from...
That's exactly it. So I want to make sure that you have a life preserver in you.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Appreciate it.
All right, good. All right, Renee. Superintendent's report.
And it's a, it's a short and sweet one?
Yes. Um, so yeah, so I saw it in there. Is there any, is this an up-to-date of leave of absences and everything else, too? If there is additional, could you email it to us? Or unpaid lees or anything else?
Yeah, the only, the only ones are the ones that you've already approved. Caitlin's was extended, uh, you had already approved her. I think she was supposed to come back January 2nd. This is just to extend her to January 19th.
Okay, that's all. That's the only thing.
And then we've had that resignation of being teacher assistant at the middle school.
Okay.
So I, we will have to fill that position.
Yep. So I just know if, if this was current, if there was anything additional of that? Nope, beautiful. Okay. Thank you. So we're gonna meet. Do we need to, you know, approval of leave of absence? No, anything? Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the renewal of Pontigan's at High School's principal as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the contract renewal of the Pontigan's at High School Associate Principal as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. Thank you. Update on the budget. Um, Amanda and Renee, thank you. You guys built a very reasonable...
So I think there's some, some context that I, I'd like to give, and then you can open up for discussion if you're okay with that.
Thank you.
So the budget process, I know most of you know what the budget process is, um, but this is the first, Amanda and I obviously have gone through it together, because last year I did, um, kind of a fast track with Diane. But we start at the building level, at the department level. Just so you know, department leaders submit what they would like to be a reasonable budget. They then meet with each building principal. The building principal goes through it, understands it. It's all in our eye vision system, so the lines are in there that says they need, you know, $175 for pens or whatever they need. I don't know if that's a realistic cost or not. From there, Amanda and I meet with each building principal, and we go over the budget presented for each department and each school management individual budget. Amanda and I then sit, and we talk through that. We then went back to the principals, and we went back to each department chair, and we cut from there. But they had input into that because we wanted to be sure that they understood where the reductions, um, were made. We then went back to the, to the principals. So we started this process, I think, the second or third week of October, and we had these continuous meetings. So it really is a collaborative and integral, um, process. So the department leaders know what they're asking for. I feel like we have a pretty good sense of what they're asking for. They also have to complete a narrative to us, telling us the story of they've increased their budget why, and if they're asking for more money. So when it comes time for us to sit down and say, you can't have this, or you have to move this, it, it was, it was a, a conversation. We then met with the budget subcommittee, um, and proposed, um, the budget on, I think, the first week of December. And from there, there was feedback. Amanda and I met the next day, made some adjustments, and then I sent out the, the draft. Brendan, I met with you in person, right, because that was the day you were doing the bills. Yeah, and then, and then I caught him, and I said, just one more thing. And I think I said that five times. So this budget presented has, you know, that, that layered approach. And Amanda, also, we considered the fact that there are some unknowns, and I think it's really important that you are aware of those. the fact that there are some unknowns, and I think it's really important that you, um, are aware of those, we don't know state aid until May. And so if you look, we increased state aid from this year, about a hundred thousand dollars, I don't know if that's, um.
You increased it or decreased it?
We decreased it, because I'm not sure that, you know, they keep saying the whole harmless was gone last year, the Superintendent's Association have, they told us to be very cautious when budgeting, because we won't know that until May in your hearing, that we're not going to get what we, what we've received, that's not, okay. So, the other thing we are cautious of is tuition, if you look, we did increase it, um, to, uh, to four million, however, although they came back right now saying that programs are not substantially similar, that's not what's taking our students away or not sending them here, that other districts are not able to replicate and duplicate our program, so even if they don't have substantially similar, similar, or they're not deemed substantially similar, students will still choose to stay in their whole district if they have the same program, that's, that's what we're facing right now, so I'm uncertain of tuition, and that's never something we want to depend on, uh, because that, that's to put us in a space where we're trying to find the money elsewhere. The other thing that hit us the hardest this year, and I don't know if you had realized it, but, um, Essar money has finally run out. So they extended it one more year, which was this year we're in, and that for us held three top step teacher positions. So you have to think about that, those positions are necessary, they were positions that were, they were teachers that were here, and when that money came in, you could shift it a little bit to put them in, in support positions or shifted that, uh, to, to.
So then we hired new other teachers, we hired other teachers to fill their teaching positions?
Um.
If they put in more of a.
Not one of them, one of them was already a math specialist, and I think you shifted from the general fund and, I'm not entirely sure how that happened. But they're top step teachers, um, and we had two teachers who retired last year from the middle school, and I did not fill their positions. We had one teacher who retired from the high school, and we already had a teacher in place and we shifted her, so it's, we didn't hire new people from those two retirees last year. And I'm not looking right now to reduce staff other than shift, um, possibly, um, a teacher from one position to, to another if we have to based on the Essar, but you've lost three top step teachers, so it was, it was salary and benefits that was covered through Essar, and we don't have that moving into next year. In addition to that, this budget reflects, uh, two and a half percent increase for the teachers' salary, so you have to see that increase in the budget, and a three percent for non-certified. So, when you look at the money that we're losing, and you look at the increase in that, you have to see that, that works. Amanda, I don't know if there's anything I've forgotten to kind of lay the land. Uh, we get the, um, I am thinking about retiring by, um, I, I think it was January first. There, I see they have not, yeah, I received many, yeah. So we have, I may retire, but there's not a guarantee that they will retire.
Can I ask a question? So, I hate using fund balance, because to me, I just want to make sure we're not creating a structural deficit. So, is there any, is that money being used, can that be used towards like one-time expenditures? So we're not funding something that's a continued expense, like a teacher's salary or something like that, can we use that to buy a van or equipment that's a one-time purchase? Because I want to make sure that we're not creating a structural deficit. Yeah, but, yeah, but we still, I don't know, so do, do you understand my concern?
I do, I, I think I'm.
Because we increased it from one fifty to three hundred, so you took more out of.
We did, but from what I understand, we don't need, we, the one fifty that we, we pulled, um, from this year is, we have not needed or used yet, so that would go back. So when we say it's a three hundred, it's including that one fifty right now, so actually it would be an increase of one fifty, but I understand what you're saying.
I understand, but, but then, but the following year will be three hundred, because then we're, we need that money. So if we, if we're taking the money that we didn't use this year, that's fine, but then the following year, we're going to need three hundred to balance the budget. So you're starting off behind, so you're starting off three hundred thousand dollars in the hole behind.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean, so that's therefore, I don't want to go to the, um, I don't want to go to our fund balance as our.
I understand.
I mean, that's fine for an emergency, I'm sorry, Pat, I'm sorry, if, like, if that's an emergency and you go to it, that's fine, but three hundred thousand really worries me. That's all, because I don't want to start in the hole.
I agree with what you're saying, it should be, we can't build it into the budget.
No. Like I said, if we could use it towards, if there's any, I don't know if you can go through the budget and see if there's any one-time expenditures, um, that we could put that towards. That's exactly, yes.
Sure.
So you want me to restrict that essentially?
I'll, I'll, that's with that too, I mean, I, I think, I don't think, that, that's an interesting question, right, because those technology expenses should be theoretically a recurring expense too. We should be budgeting like a certain amount each year for technology upgrades, so, I don't, I don't all the way disagree with you, I'm just not sure how I feel about it.
Well, lots of software is.
Well, that software could be five years, you know, or whatever, it could, so you really subscription now, a lot of them, so, I'm just not, I feel like that's a mindset that we used to use, and I'm not sure that it was correct. Same thing with some of the maintenance stuff, right, like, when we talk about a van, like, that, that is a big expense, but it's not really a one-time expense, you know, that van's good for five, really, like, we're making a lot of.
But you don't want to keep it, but you don't want to keep it in the budget, rolling it there, yeah, that's what I'm.
Yeah.
But I mean, there should be an expectation of like, you know, fifteen thousand a year of like, equipment, or fifteen thousand dollars a year of software, technology.
So, maybe.
So I, I don't, yeah, I don't know.
Maybe we're gonna give it to Renee to look at, I mean, if we can get the consensus of the committee, I mean, maybe I'm the only one who feels this way, and that's, if I am, then I, then that's great, I respect the committee's wishes, but that's my concern, that I don't want to, if we're budgeting, it's like, you know, you're taking from your, you're, you're taking from your retirement account to pay your electricity bill. Do you know what I mean, I don't, I don't think that's budgetarily the right thing to do.
I have a question.
What does our policy say for the percentage that's required for us to have, that's how they, I think.
I'm not aware of a policy.
We have a policy for the fund balance.
Okay.
So, all right, that's definitely for the next meeting, how, if we could have that, yeah.
Yeah, because, like, there's a point when your fund balance gets so big, you have to figure out a way to.
Yeah.
Because that's an expectation.
If, yeah, if that's the case.
I mean, maybe it's something you're taking a bite out of some of those capital projects.
That's exactly it, to offset, things that we need, things that we need, but not things, not to offset the entire budget, that's my.
Yep.
So, does anybody else agree with me, with my concern?
Yeah, always.
So Renee, is there a way of going through and looking to see if there's any one-time things you could highlight that we could put that towards?
So was your question to, to looking, say, can we, can we put the one fifty towards something?
Yes.
Or question to put three hundred towards something?
No, one fifty.
So, one fifty.
The three hundred worried me, yes.
At this budget for next year, put one fifty towards it.
Yes.
But not.
Not the one fifty that was re, that wasn't spent.
Well, the three hundred worries, was the, because then you're creating three hundred thousand for the following year for twenty twenty-five.
So you're happy with her fin, um, she's just clarifying though.
No, 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 but you said what I'm saying, yeah, it's.
No, I'm just clarifying, do you?
Because we're spending three hundred out of fund balance, because we were gonna return one fifty to it.
Yeah, if, yeah.
But you're good with us just doing the extra one fifty that we're pulling out this year?
Yeah. So keeping it. All right, even if it's three hundred, if it's three hundred thousand, I'm fine with that. I'm fine if you find, if you have three hundred thousand dollars worth of purchases for one.
That we won't need again next year.
Exactly.
My clarification was one fifty or three hundred.
Whichever, both is great, one or the other, whatever you want to do, but one fifty is definitely. Well, no, unless she just doesn't pull it out, but put that towards one-time expenditures.
She just wants to know, she wants earmarked.
Yes, so it's not going towards.
Aren't we spending it anyways?
We're spending it anyways, but I want to make sure we can put it towards something that's, that's a one-time expenditure.
So in other words, next year, we don't have to pull it out, because we don't have to buy that again.
No, I get that. But what are the odds we spend the three hundred this year if you, we didn't spend the one fifty this year?
We also honestly went back to in the twenty-two, three years, we pulled two thirty-seven, so we felt like it was a comfortable space to pull the, the.
And then, but then, you know, that's why we went back to one fifty, because that was the year, what year was it, two thirty-seven?
No, the, the twenty-three, twenty-four, I, I did that budget at one fifty.
Yep, the two thirty-seven, that was the year, that was my year, we didn't do, remember, we never met as a budget subcommittee? That was not a good year, Renee, so we're not going to use that as an example.
Okay, I'm just using, I was just using that as a reference.
No, no, I know. And that's why we didn't, that's why I was so, for last year, that's why we didn't, because that, we never had a budget subcommittee meeting that year.
All right, so Amanda, can I, we'll sit down and we'll see if there's a one-time project or something that can.
I would just, I'd like to go back to Brendan's work, that and on the car.
Yeah, it was kind of a staple.
Can I think about, like, in Gloucester, when we lease all the vehicles, that's capital one-time expenses, even though we obviously know from buying, cars to me are like the great way to spend the ass.
I realize that, as I was saying, that we're choosing for capital projects, that's, it's really different cars.
Yeah.
But I think it was more of a question of the way we think about some of those things.
Yes.
We can treat it as a capital expense, but it's, it's not, it's not a one-time thing, so.
We should still budget something for maintenance repair, we should budget, but it doesn't need to be the sixty thousand dollars.
And those are the easier ones.
It's also not a line item, that we're constantly month on a monthly basis, that one.
Right. Right. And then, so the fund, the, the fund balance policy is G A S D fifty-four, sixty-five-four, I don't know.
Look at you.
I can't find anything that uses it.
Oh, there's no money in there?
It's the governmental accounting standard for it, so it sounds like it's just best practice as possible. Well, we last looked at it in twenty-eleven.
There's no, but there's no percentage in there?
I couldn't see one on here, but I also, I need glasses.
The towns, yeah, they have by law, but I don't think this school does.
We, we have one.
Well, we, we do, we do, as it turns out, because we have it.
What, Isaac Payne?
Uh, we do too, yeah, because what we do is we use it for capital budgets.
Yeah.
We use it to help the town.
Okay.
A lot of times in the policies now, we write in accordance with the state, so you still have to woke up the, you still have to look up the state, because we're not gonna put it in our contract, I mean, our policy.
Law, exactly. So that way, it's ambiguous, it's ambiguous.
It's active to, as it updates.
All right, so Renee.
The policy is, it's gonna be a power, it's not gonna have an alone.
Well, see, Isaac Payne hasn't, hasn't, um, a percentage. All right, so Renee, you good?
I'm good.
Does that make sense?
I'm good with that part.
Okay, so, like, I support it, and thank you for working so hard at that, but that's the only thing that concerns me, as long as we can earmark that towards things, I'm fine with it. As long as we can put it towards things that are not gonna go towards electricity and stuff like that. Yes, go ahead, Pat, sorry.
Yeah, I don't want to be the odd.
It is cooked in there, it is in there, there's a number.
There is a number? What's the number?
Uh, eight percent of the total general fund, so at the end of each fiscal year, the business manager will report the portion of the unassigned fund balance.
I thought so.
In addition, the business manager shall maintain an unassigned fund balance of no less than two months of general fund operating expenditures and/or a minimum of eight percent of total general fund budgeted operating expenditures, whichever is lower.
So at the next meeting.
So wait, that's because you're a region and you, you have no town to go, so like, you've got to make your, so if your money doesn't come in, you have to cover it yourself, that's why you always need to have money.
Yes. And if we have like an out-of-district student or something, an emergency that happens, we have to pay for it, we can't go to the town and say, we need this.
Yeah, whereas like Gloucester or hand or Gloucester has the town back.
It's on the website.
So, all right, the next meeting, so we'll just continue the budget, we don't have to worry about that right now.
So you're saying we don't have that much in the fund, so we should start adding to the.
Kyle, you want the policy? You want the policy, the number?
Pat, go ahead, what's your question, sorry.
I didn't know, were you gonna say, can I respect this? Because some of the things that hit me was, like, so the education program, I mean, down, that's gone up five, almost half a year. So I did want to see that.
What, Pat, what page, please?
I'm on the first page, right there, first page under, just the education program, first page.
Okay.
Other education program, it's like half a million dollars, and I wrote myself a question, like, what were the specifics? But then as I started to go through the budget, to start on page seventeen in this budget, then it appears that we have to have tremendous increases in going with all the education programs. And it's not that I'm not in favor of the gap rate, but we're, we're already stretching our head about, you know, I'm hesitant to be coming next year, we lose this while it's off. But some of these increases are, are too sweeping, and I, I just, in, so that, I'm gonna make that comment, and I'm not gonna cherry pick any further than that. But I, from a Gloucester standpoint, you know, we're getting the bigger swing, so we're at almost twelve percent, three point nine three, and overall, we're sitting here at two point nine three. I'd like to see some way I could just be sharper a little bit more, and I'd like to see this one just down to two point five, or do this better, and I don't know how that would affect Gloucester, but this is just a little too, too much, especially in the gap rate.
Well, just so technology, pre-engineering pathway, I think goes up, right, that's got a forty-one thousand dollar increase.
Yeah, I mean, just look at all the pathways programs, only just twenty-three thousand, forty-one thousand, um.
Math went up sixty-eight thousand.
Four thousand.
But, so I think, so there are a couple of comments I think were, if you, um, just to share, and then we certainly can, can continue, because I think the dialogue is important. The math is going up forty-five thousand, you'll see social studies, the middle school going up, because our curriculum has run out for math, it ends this year, so we have, no, he, he just said, no, no.
No, I brought up math, because math for the high school went up forty thousand.
Because we didn't have it, you had a three-year contract, and the three years are up, so that has to go in there, we need to purchase a curriculum, you're required by ride, it has to be a high-quality curriculum, and there's only certain ones that you can purchase, so that has to be in there.
Well, you want a high quality.
Well, you can't, you, you can't not have one, um, unless your state assessment results are a hundred percent, you can grow your own.
Oh.
Which, it's not a hundred percent.
But not a hundred percent?
No, it has to be very high, so that has to be in there, we have to pay for math curriculum, you did a three-year contract, paid for that before. With respect to the pathways, I, I, I think they're, uh, it's important for you to see the needs. Many of those, um, increases are due to the students who are in there, the increase in the students, so we have to service them. However, there are parts that we needed to look and, and, and work on, we certainly can work on. One of the areas for you to look at that didn't go up much, but is your EMT pathway, we pay, um, a tuition with Roger Williams University, and that's fifteen hundred dollars a student, so in order for us to have that program, we're tied to that forty-five thousand dollars, because we offer the sections of those. The art pathway had an increase because they needed to purchase more digital cameras, the cameras have a shelf life. So, that's why I say to you, the narratives are important, because we sat and went through it, if there's, so if you say that we have to cut, these are places that I would feel that at least I can speak to the areas for some of those increases, that's what they're, what they're.
From my last comment, response to that was, I think, we could fill some of these actuators, maybe, and ACVs, they're under that way, showing up, it's motion. And that's just my thing, it's just, we're gonna look at these, how they're, they're gonna look at these expectations, and they're just gonna say, wow.
Me, some may, some may not, depends on who's in there, if they're parents in there, then they understand the quality of the classroom.
I just, I, I would like to see this part in a better shot.
I, I think, I, I think we have to walk on a fine line there, because we're getting to the point where there's potential for us to actually lose some of these programs, so if we stop investing in them, we may.
I, I was just gonna second that.
Hurt ourselves in the long term.
Yeah, being a public school teacher, especially in Johnston, where we're struggling to build these programs, um, so, because we're losing students to districts that have it. If we start, if we don't, if we don't fully invest in them, our students are going to find better programs, and we're gonna not only end up with an education system that's not as strong as it is now, but we're gonna end up losing kids and way behind the eight-wall in terms of trying to build it back up.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, can we feel a little sharper on this, because that's all I'm saying, I think it's a lot of spending.
Aaron?
I agree with Pat, because of the fact that, I'm not looking at now, I'm looking at, say, three to five years down the road. If the fact that we do lose of where we have similar programs, we're gonna lose a lot of tuition in students. On top of that, we're also going to be, we can't reduce the budget according to state law, so now we're gonna be stuck at this number or more. Going forward, we're gonna be putting the taxpayers in a deficit that they're not gonna be able to get out of. I truly, truly feel that this needs to be sharper, because of the fact that if we're gonna hit Gloucester, say, even with a four percent, because the previous budget that we had was one percent, correct, didn't we have a one percent budget last year?
Less than one percent.
The last one was less than one percent. This year, we're now hitting Gloucester with, or not even Gloucester, just overall at two point nine three percent? I'm sorry, but.
I understand that, and that's why I set the preface at the beginning, that losing Essar money for three top step teachers plus benefits is a big, and you knew that would, I mean.
That's over a three hundred thousand dollars.
I understand that, but I still feel that this needs to be sharper, I agree with Pat.
But I also just want to make one more comment, and we will go back and we will sharpen it, but we did go through a very lengthy process, and we did also meet with the subcommittee, and we did share all this, so I, I, I just want to share that part as well.
Are we on the subcommittee?
The other part that, the other part that Cindy said was important, that it's not about substantially similar what the state determines, the reason you're not substantially similar is because we offer what other schools don't. For example, if we're sending, we bought, um, all right, just look at your EMT program, there are not others, other schools don't have that certification, so we have the EMT program. When you look at what the teachers are doing for their certifications, what they offer to students is what determines you're substantially similar.
But what happens when they say that we're substantially similar, that's the issue.
But they're not saying you're substantially similar, because you're differentiating through the programs, that's why.
Is it true we can't lower budget? Is it true that we can't decrease a budget?
So you can decrease, Aaron, I just wanted to correct you on that, you can based on population, so you can, in fact, capital, capital, um, maintenance of effort does not apply
So when our kids leave.
to popu, um, to population, so if you lose population, you can decrease the student based on your per pu, per student ratio, correct, Marion?
Yes, and keep in mind, I mean, you're not, you're, you're set, you're always going to, that budget's gonna go up based, based on like two and two and a half percent.
Just inflation.
And three and percent, three percent.
Yeah.
I mean, that's gonna go up three percent just from your sal, from your salary.
Yeah, look at the salaries, it's two and a half percent, and then the non-certifieds, so we're looking at.
But non-certifieds though is pennies on the dollar compared to certified, let's just put that out there.
But it doesn't matter, but that, I know, Aaron, but still, that two and a half percent on the teacher's salary, that's a significant increase, do you happen to know what that increase is overall, Amanda?
Did some rough numbers with, with Renee earlier, and it was like six point six million or something.
Just in salaries, just the raises, for cert, and your benefits are the same for your cert.
I'm just saying that I agree with Pat, when we put this budget out there, no matter what's gonna happen, you know what, we just let the cards fall as they may, and if the voters vote it down, I say we just let it. I'm just saying that I agree with Pat, when we put this budget out there, no matter what's going to happen, you know what, we just let the cards fall as they may, and if the voters vote it down, I say we just let it go that way.
One, one thing-
Because that's the way I feel it is.
If the, if the voters vote on it, you don't have a choice anyway, it's up to the voters.
So.
If we underfund one year, we're just kicking the problem down, so we were at one percent last year, that's part of the reason why we're at three percent, right? It's, it's, you know, then we can talk about what we do with, you know, basically our, our loan money and all of that stuff, but that's, that's really it, right? If we, if we sell ourselves short one year, and we don't account for it properly, we're not really keeping up with, with basically the general growth of the economy as a whole.
Gloucester's true to take that.
Right.
And so.
It stinks, it stinks.
Gloucester, Gloucester had like a seven percent, remember we had like a seven percent increase one year, it was astronomical, Gloucester's like, we'll give you some of ours, like you-
To that's point, you, you, just try and keep that swing out of it, like, just look at the overall growth, because it's not really a, it's not a healthy thing to look at.
It's not a fair. It's not.
It stinks to explain to like the voters, but.
Where are our tax bill went, and then I'm looking at, you know, are, 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 are fire tax bill tripled, are tax bills?
Because if you have increased taxes, you're going to be losing tuition and losing students going forward.
To be looking at picking up almost four percent, I'm just saying, this is too high.
Technically, had the town set the money aside on the years when the swing went to Foster, that should not be what you're asking them. In Foster, when the swing penalizes Foster or doesn't, so this year, for example, our town council has a policy where they set that money aside, that delta, so then the years where the swing goes to Gloucester, then it offsets it.
Budgets approach.
Because it does come out in the wash, it's, it's a ridiculous system, and I wish I had a way to improve it, um, because it's, it's all, it can tell a nor- like a, a person off the street, like, oh, this is why Foster's getting a discount, because they're going to get pissed, I get it.
Well, that's why I'm not talking to them.
But like, that's, the town council should do it.
Well, Pat, what is Gloucester, what is Gloucester looking at right now, like, as an elementary?
Two percent, two and a half?
So, and-
So I, I, I think it's fair, I mean, if you're saying goal two point five, for, so it's eek, same?
And we're at, almost, we're at two point nine three.
Well, I'm saying for, to what Gloucester takes, two point nine three.
We, we can't lower Gloucester to two point five.
No, no, what, what I was saying was, if, if, I'm saying we can't go any lower than what the elementary schools are getting, I mean, it's totally different.
Overall.
Yeah, exactly, it's just, it's the reception of going down to Gloucester, and you say three point nine, which you're asking for, so can we lower that to, to, um, like, three point six or something?
Well, I'm not, so we can't go by, like, at, like Brendan said, uh, we can't go by what the swing is, you can't. So if you, if, if you want to try to bring forward, if they're asking for two point five, I mean, what's the consensus of the committee?
I would say two point five or less, that's what mine is.
On our, on, on the overall budget?
On overall budget, two point five or less.
Do you want to keep it, do you want to, what's your, I want them to have-
How is that possible when we had raises bigger than that? And we lost grants.
But we've also had bigger raises the previous year also.
But we lost grant money.
Even though we lost the ESAR money, I understand that.
Listen to me, we lost grant money, and we all approved, we all approved these raises. And we are all aware of the huge grants being cut. So you can't in one breath say, let's give everybody a three point, uh, three percent raise, and then in the very next breath say, let's cut the budget.
Well, I have one other area too, on change, twenty-one, athletic group got forty-five thousand five hundred percent.
Is that because of transportation, or is that?
No, but all I know is that we're looking at these numbers.
What is it? It's transportation, it's transportation.
If somebody cut, that's all we think.
So why don't, I want to get a consensus from the committee of nine people, so I got, Aaron, let's go to two point five mark, are you fine with where it's at?
I'm fine.
Brendan?
I, I'm okay with where it's at.
Me, I'm okay where it's at, as long as we can redirect that, the, um, fund balance.
Hundred percent behind this budget.
Um, Eileen? Okay, perfect, thank you, Eileen.
I'd like to see if you need a two point five or less.
Amy?
I, I think there's room in the question.
Amy?
I'm wondering, you all, who have more experience on this than myself, but I, I mean, I, I would say, you know, if, if they're, if they're conservative as possible, which I mean, you know, the larger pieces of that patent scope tool, you know, like we said, for example, art, maybe cameras are a little gray. Informed amount, or conservative amount, like, I think you're not going to have some issues with certain factors, you know, with that, but, but.
No, the cameras are just, just what they need for the envelope that they have.
I'm just thinking, I was just thinking, you know, they're going to, you know, see people that are going to have.
I think when they say CT programs, I'm sorry to look that.
You support the budget.
Well, so we go any further, who is on the budget committee?
Me.
One, two, three, four.
I have, I have one, we have one subcommittee.
I had a private.
Alright, I just, we had, but we had-
I, I, we have a call, so I have one.
No, but we had one subcommittee meeting, and then you all asked us to, to reduce it, and then Amanda and I met the next morning, and then I did send a copy of what that, that one was to Shelley.
Everybody.
Yep, I sent it to all of you, and then Brendan happened to be in the office, so I met with him, so.
No, no, we've scheduled another, we've scheduled another budget meeting for the twentieth, and nobody showed up.
I did schedule another meeting. No, huh?
I was in my way.
I'm, yeah.
Right.
But that's, so I, I, I appreciate the conversations, and I think they're going to get us where we need to be, but, um, I also want to be mindful of the fact that we did have that budget subcommittee, we were asked to reduce, Amanda and I sat and reduced it the next day, I sent you another copy, and then we did have a follow-up meeting to be able to discuss this, just so I'm clear though, so I know what our next steps are Friday. If you're asking me to reduce the budget.
The consensus of the committee, Renee, is that we support your area.
Consensus is the alone, or the majority.
So two people, there was two people that were concerned and wanted it lower, everyone else, seven people supported your budget. So you're fine, Renee?
I mean, Renee, you could focus on the budget.
I mean, if you feel-
I'm assuming this isn't done.
You can take, if you, you can do what you, your needs are, you know you're building better than we do. If you look at this and you say, alright, I need to make cuts, fine, I want you to look at the, I think, that was the consensus of the committee, if I was correct, about the three hundred thousand, making sure we allocate that towards one time, the one fifty.
Right, and that's, that's where I think I'm, I'm, I'm trying to work that balance, is if you're concerned about taking three hundred thousand from, from, from the, the fund balance to take that three hundred thousand, we don't want to take.
Well, it's the one fifty, it's the one fifty.
Right, but even the one fifty or the three hundred, if we remove that and don't use that, just, just take that out, then, then the budget's going up, so.
Well, you can't use that towards any of your one-time.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying, what I'm saying is to understand the process here, or the message, that if, if you, if we do cut or reduce.
In one breath we're saying, don't use the fund balance, and the next breath we're saying, cut the budget. You can't do both.
So, is there-
And if state aid comes higher, or if-
Yeah, exactly, you don't know, so much I know.
But I'm not to budget with those in mind because those are uncertain.
So I guess, I guess, I, I know the, the consensus is to keep the budget, right? But can you have ideas of what can be cut, so if the, if it does get voted down, just be ready with what the next number is?
What I'd like to do, can I propose that Amanda and I sit and review it and see if there's more room, and then we reconvene the budget subcommittee?
Yeah.
That's fine.
And share that, because I'm not comfortable just saying, let's do this based on the discussion.
Like I said, my only concern was that one fifty? Use, if you could just kind of earmark that towards things that you think will be a one-time expense for like five years, six years, whatever it might be.
I think that's good, I just need to know that I can look at you, and I will, and I'll answer the question, and I can say, I did my best. So I'm sorry if I committed to you off here tonight, but I'm taxpayer like you all, and I'm telling you, this is supposed to-
Just don't, okay, keep in mind, this budget goes in front of the financial town meeting, if people at the financial town meeting can get up, you can cut the budget.
Exactly.
Right, so I think that's what Mark is getting at.
So if you go in too low right now.
That's kind of my concern.
I'm just saying like, be ready, be ready with the next number, but don't propose us the next number.
I agree, a hundred percent agree with what Mark just said.
Because if they, if you cut a hundred percent, if we say, alright, let's cut the bare bones now, then if we're cut again, then we're really the bare bones, and we're going to be hard, we're buying oil because our wood furnace thingy's not working, I know there's a technical name for it, but I'm buying a wood furnace thingy.
Wow, so we increased our expense on pellets, then, if it's not working, why are we spending more money on it?
Because we still, we still need them for the middle school.
At the middle school.
So, but if the budget doesn't pass, can we, can we operate less of this budget?
No, they, usually they, the budget passes, but sometimes, so one year, they cut it by a hundred and some thousand, and we had to go through, that was a bad year, because he ends up not making cuts, that was a bad year.
That was only, we only gave it really only a ton.
Yeah, so.
In the last.
Present it as is, but have a plan.
Earmark the stuff, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
We need the money.
Okay.
Again, I see.
It's, yeah, it, it's, the swing is ridiculous.
But I don't think we need a sub-
So the charter committee.
You need to, you need to have a list, what happens.
But I don't think we need to know, but I, that's what I'm saying, I don't know if we need a subcommittee, that's on the background, because I really don't want-
You need to know.
But, but that's, yeah.
But I don't think we need a subcommittee to tell her, because I don't want her, if this, if the majori- if the committee, that's what I'm saying, the committee as a whole, uh, the majority of the, of the committee is saying they want to present this budget.
That's, yeah, but then she's choosing your own.
Then, then she's fine, then we should not be saying, we, we, we should meet again, we don't need to meet again, I don't think, unless you need to go over your one-time, but, who am I to tell you what you're, you're going to earmark as your one-time expenditures, that's not my role. My job's to say, can you put that somewhere that goes towards something that's going to last you five years?
So if the financial town meeting cuts one hundred thousand, where would you cut?
That's all you need to know, and that's you and Amanda, that's not us.
That would suggest.
Renee, we good?
Sure.
So we don't need, because the seven people supported the budget, so we do not, we're not going to, we're going to bring forward this budget.
What's Aaron?
And Aaron.
Me, me, and me.
Oh, you just left Aaron out.
It is what it is.
Just left him out.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Consideration of communication from Gloucester Town Council.
Alright, uh, fifteen. Consideration of communication from Gloucester Town Council, I'm sorry you were to sit through all that today, thank you very much. This was based on the letter that was received, um, from the town council regarding the cleaning fees that are being charged to the recreation department. Kyle, did you happen to pull the minutes of, of the town, were you able to find the minutes of the town council meeting?
Um, yes.
So while they're pulling that up, um, I don't know if you want to scan through, okay, right here.
Recreation department used the building.
Um, okay. Discussion, um, Shields stated the region modified the facility use from the last spring to include all entities using the building, pay rental fee and a custodial fee for each use, which is incorrect, by the way, there is no rental fee, there is only a custodial, a cleaning fee. Shields stated that he requested the fees be exempted, but the region only exempted the town youth programs. Shields stated that the town adult programs were exempted from the rental fee, okay, and is paying the seventy-five dollar per use for the adult programs out of the rec department budget. Stated, he spoke to two members, Councilman Berlingame stated he spoke to two members of the regional school committee, Mark Rizzo. Okay, so it is saying that only the seventy-five dollars, um, is for the usage fee. Um, I just, so the committee, they began a discussion, but first, I want to pull up that I did research on other towns and their adult leagues. Situate does not have an adult league, neither does Vareville, um, Coventry, I pulled up Coventry's adult league, they are, um, Coventry's adult leagues is seventy-five dollars for co-ed basketball, it's seventy-five dollars for a non-resident, and seventy dollars for a resident. You can have a drop-in night available for ten dollars each night, must pay in advance, no credit card fees. Um, Johnston Rec Department does not have any adult leagues besides softball, and their softball league is seven hundred and fifty dollars per team. They also, if what they said at Johnston, so I actually called the rec department to find more specifics, I was surprised, a big town like that with Rhino Gym and stuff, they didn't have a basketball league, they said no, because people rent out the facilities, and the hourly rate is forty-five dollars an hour if you are a resident, and fifty dollars an hour if you are a non-resident. Um, Cranston, Parks and Recreation does not have an adult league, same thing, they rent out their gym uses for, um, they rent out their gym facilities for seventy dollars an hour and seventy-five dollars an hour. There, they also charge twenty-five dollars for their, um, their youth programs, so their, their youth programs on the, so what we were asking for, I do not think was unreasonable.
It was seventy, to be clear, it was seventy-five dollars, period, end of story, for the cleaning fees for the entire day.
So if they were creative and they used it from five to ten o'clock at night, and used both gyms for five hours, it's seventy-five dollars the whole entire time, so.
Not per hour. It's not by the gym, it's not by the hour.
Hour, so, but, like, so according to other towns, it is very fair and very conservative.
And again, this is just, it would, just for adults, custodial fees.
Just adults, yes.
Is it strictly for residents only? Do they, do we have people-
We didn't even differentiate.
Do we have people coming from different towns to play in our community?
Oh, they're people that come from different towns to play in the leagues, yes, no, it's only, it's only residents, Gloucester and Foster. Yeah, we're regional school, why would they not, does anybody card them when they show up? Is anybody here, um, questioning their cert- their identification when they show up?
We-
I would be a hundred percent certain that there's no one else.
So we do have an individual that's in charge of each league, and yes, they are aware of who is coming to play, so if you see someone new, typically they're going to go ahead and ask who exactly they are and where they're coming from.
Okay, I was told this, I was told that there's people from Situate that come here, that's-
Yeah, I, I haven't heard that from the individual that's in charge of the basketball or the volleyball, so that doesn't seem like something that's come across my desk yet.
Okay. Um, anybody else have any other questions or concerns?
So do you have Gloucesters who knows who's coming into this school?
So the two individuals that are in charge of the league do, in fact, keep attendance, it's not something that comes to me unless there's a problem identified by those supervisors.
We had talked about you getting creative with more than, using more than once.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we spoke with, um, Michelle Allen, and she said that unfortunately she wasn't going to be able to accommodate us to have both basketball and volleyball on the same day. It was a wonderful idea, but it just didn't necessarily work out.
Because we actually, is it because we have teams at that time?
From what I was identified, it was that, and then I believe it was our volleyball supervisor indicated that, um, perhaps the field house or the exal- exal- or, can't even-
Oh, that is not, that's not, the other gym is not for volleyball.
Yeah, exactly.
No, it's good for basketball.
Yes.
So if you get, if you get volleyball in the main gym and basketball in the other gym, I think is what Cindy was saying, they couldn't both be volleyball.
No, exactly, so, I, I, I yield to their professionalism and their understanding of these facilities, so.
No, because that's not a volleyball, there's, there's, there's no volleyball in that, in there. So, I just, I did research on the communities and other towns, did anybody else have anything?
Well, there are several other communities down south, so I work in the Narragansett School System as a teacher, and so they run both a morning and evening adult basketball program. They do not charge for either program, the only time they do charge is when there is not a individual that can open up the gym in the morning, so one of the teachers that happens to play in the league unlocks the gym. If he's not available and they need to bring a janitor in, then they'll go ahead and charge the fee. And then also, South Kingstown is another town that does not charge their residents to play basketball there.
Okay, so what are the times, what are the times, like whenever, or?
So they have set days, and the South Kingstown leagues play in the evening, and as I indicated, at the Narragansett Middle School, we have a league that plays in the morning on, I believe it's Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then I think there's one night right now that they're currently playing on Wednesday evenings.
Do they play when the kids are there?
Uh, the, no, this is well before school starts, so our school starts at eight, and they're playing basketball at six-thirty, and they're out by seven-thirty, they're dedicated.
I mean, if, if, if we had the tourism dollars in Narragansett, I'm sure we'd be able to.
Yeah.
Offer something like that, or if we charge forty dollars a day for parking.
Well, here's the thing, they even had to pay, he made a comment that they had to pay for someone to be there to open up the doors.
Yeah.
We have to pay for someone to be here to lock up the doors, it's the same thing, it's just the opposite end.
It's similar, but, so, when there is a janitor that is working a regular shift in the evening, then they don't have to compensate, it's when they have to bring someone in, um, outside of the regularly scheduled hours that they charge. So it's similar, but a little bit different.
So I, I originally had started a little bit of this, after we voted on it the last time, realized I was the only one saying no, I just said yes, and that's, and I'm like, I'm like, oh, so I wanted to reconsider, it just didn't sit right. Then I talked, and then I-
Sorry, Kyle, then I, as I talked to some other people and heard people's opinions and talked with Mr. Shields and whatever, I asked for if we could recon, you know, just at least have a reconsideration for more con- uh, more communication. And then the counselor sent this letter to Dr. Pallat, or the school committee, so then I, you know, realized that it would be on for more discussion. So I guess for me, the bottom line is, is, um, you know, this has never happened in Gloucester before, you see, for fifty years this has been going on. And again, I'm going to say, this is at a time when fire tax bills has tripled, in Gloucester, our, our, our town tax bill is tremendous, and our school bill is going to be high too, and now we're going to ask people who, you know, the schools are not a taxing authority. You're getting all of your revenue from the state and from the town as it is, and now we're gonna ask your taxpayer, who pays for all this, to begin with, you're not a taxing authority, we're gonna ask them for a measly seventy-five bucks. I think it's just not nec- uh, it's just not necessary. You got it in this budget somewhere, the janitors are in here doing their deal anyway, and so I'm just gonna speak, I'll be the one guy out again. My vote is no.
Can I play the devil's advocate for a second?
Sure.
I live in Gloucester, can I join the, the lead?
Since it's played at the region, I would say that as a yes.
So, say I wanted to start, you know, Brendan's robotics lab for Foster and Lost Residents, and wanted to be in the robotics lab, would that be okay? You know, say I wanted to start a drama club.
Who's funding it?
Right, well, yeah, you know, I'd...
It's volunteer.
Why don't you use the wood shop to start Steve Wood?
You know what?
It just, it just, all I'm saying is...
To answer you is, it's different. They've been playing this, this has been going on for fifty-some years. It's different, what you wanted.
I guess it's more, we just have to be careful about the specimens we're studying, and I don't, I understand it's changing, it's difficult, but we just have to be consistent in how we apply these things, and just because it hasn't been asked yet, doesn't mean it couldn't be asked or shouldn't be asked. Heck, I think we should encourage those things. Why not? Right? They're nice to, to be a well-rounded, you know, area. I think they'd be nice assets to the community, but they did, they probably charge a little bit.
So, I also talked, I've talked to a number of people about this, and they, the responses that I got from everybody, because I'm not talking to recreation people, I'm talking to just taxpayers, just customers and just, because they heard about it through grapevine, and I said, what's your input? And they're like, well, I don't play basketball, I don't want to pay for somebody else to use the gym, I don't want them taking the custodial's time to, to use the facilities, the custodian should be doing something else. If you're, are you paying them overtime? And I said, yes, we're paying them overtime if they have to stay later because they're not able to finish the facilities up because it's being used. And they said, well, I shouldn't have to pay them the overtime to clean the facilities because I'm not using it. So, it's, you're talking about taxpayers paying for somebody else using the facility, and if you're gonna, I mean, it's not, so Narragansett and South Kingston, those are the other two. I mean, I, those, I didn't look that way, I looked more our end, but every place that I looked up, every single place charged. Beth, yes?
I think the difference is that you, you went to the town council and you took payment. First, how much have you paid us so far to date?
I haven't received a bill yet, and I did not approach the town council. The town council approached me inquiring about this. So, it, it seems as though your line of questioning is trying to paint me in a light that I didn't get the response that I didn't like here, and I went back to the council looking for them to overturn something, and I don't think that's necessarily appropriate.
I don't think, well, I think you read into that, she's not, no.
Okay.
I'm trying to understand...
The dialogue.
The, the dialogue. From, from my perspective, it wasn't for you as the rec director.
To absorb.
To absorb it is, I, three sons, they all play in rec leagues, they show up, they hand over money to play. Situwa, do you have men's basketball?
Yeah, they did not have it on the website that they said, so that must be a drop-in thing, because they did not have it on the website, they did not have, and when I called, they said they were on...
Pre-registered, it's probably a drop-in.
But it, but to play in that league, it's, it's like a hundred bucks or something, but anyway...
Their website is not up to date.
Anybody who...
A lot of websites aren't up to date.
Anybody who is interested in doing something physical with other people, it ends up paying if you go, hey, play this, you pay. So, I wouldn't expect that the rec department would...
To absorb this.
Pay that up, but the people get, but also to ensure, because I know for a fact somebody from Situwa plays in rec league. So, we'll also get taxpayers, why are we paying for somebody from Situwa?
Well, Beth, can I answer you?
Go ahead.
And you can follow, when I was a counselor, I was the liaison to recreation before Bob even came on, and, and the, the concept of Gloucester's recreation was to try to have and offer recreation to multiple demographics, and not just children, but to give adults something that they could get from the town, that teenagers, little kids, the swim is free, the tennis is free, and then to ha- the music concerts are free. We tried to have a recreation program to give something back to our taxpayers, because, you know, people approach you and say, what the hell do I get for my taxes? You don't pick up my garbage, we don't have lights, we don't have this, we don't have that, well, we have a good recreation program. That is, you know...
Then can't they, why can't they play basketball at Fogarty? Why do they have to use the region buildings?
I, I don't know that.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not, actually, that's not even directed at you, Pat, you, you just...
I'm just trying to give you the, the, the philosophy of what Gloucester's all about.
That's true.
If it's Gloucester Recreation, then Gloucester can use West Gloucester and Fogarty buildings, especially if Foster's not even participating.
Well, you're gonna open up a key door.
I don't even know, I don't even know how this topic, it's just, this topic just won't go away.
Do they get out again?
That's a good question, why don't we move to...
Eileen had her hand, her hand up too, so...
I was just curious, does the rec department have a budget?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and what percentage of the budget would you pay for the gym?
For the gyms? So, I think that we calculated that the rental fee was going to be thirty, or the, sorry, the cleaning fee was going to be thirty-five hundred dollars for basketball and thirty-five hundred dollars for, um, volleyball. So, seven, I have a budget that is about, including salaries, I think I was at a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for the year. So, my materials is typically somewhere in twenty-six to thirty thousand dollars, so it's, it's a fairly big amount. I think, my big thing is, I, I was resigned to the fact that this is the direction we were going in for this year, and I can definitely make adjustments going forward for next year. Um, it was difficult to swallow for this year because it was a situation that was broached after my budget cycle had completed, so I didn't have an opportunity to go ahead and adjust it, and I think that's why I came the first two times. Today, I was just coming as a spectator because I was aware that the letter was on the agenda to be discussed. I wasn't here to go ahead and engage in this again.
I think that's a fair point, though, if he didn't, if we changed the policy before, after his budget came out.
But did it say, but, but not before, but again, Eileen's saying the same thing, we're not expecting him to absorb it. All you're doing is charging a fee, you didn't have...
But it, but we don't control that.
Yeah, but so, that's what I'm trying to say, I wouldn't expect, I would not want, as a taxpayer, I would not want to be paying for, that's what, that's what people are telling me.
How did you come up with thirty-five hundred?
It was seventy-five dollars per day, times four, and then starting in October and going until March.
Times four, what do you mean times four?
Four times a week, yeah.
So, Kyle, how much have they used the gym?
Um, I'm not sure, how, how about basketball, because you were, I thought, so what have you used for basketball?
Yeah, so, I, I haven't received a bill from the, um, from our individuals, I haven't received contact from our basketball supervisor with regards to days off. I just know that coming up, um, Ms. Allen had indicated that there was going to be some weeks in which we wouldn't be able to participate because of, um, conflicts with athletics.
Yes, but I think the, the, the bill, after the last school committee meeting, when it was discussed in October, we reached out, and I know that you and Kyle had a conversation about you submitting to us when you used it, because we couldn't bill you if you got bumped or moved, right? So, just that was last...
That's a little bit different than I recall the conversation. I thought I was supposed to keep track on my side for, um, just cross-checking with each other. So, if I misheard that, that's, that's on my, I, side of things. So, I can go back and I can submit the days that... No.
Because they, you know, because I didn't know what you...
Go ahead and give it.
Mm-hmm, nope, that's totally fine.
You're only gonna get in your hands to let us know to then...
Okay, yeah, and I, I had it the opposite way, that I was waiting to hear from you on a monthly basis, so... Not a problem, just a miscommunication, we'll fix that.
So, yeah, so that, because that's, well, because I asked how much have we billed them, I think Cindy did too, and we said, we don't know because we're waiting to hear from you, because they have no control when you get bumped, because there's been reschedules of games, practices, da-da-da-da-da. So, then, yeah, so they can't bill you for something that you're not using, but, um...
I just, can I just say, I, I think the original policy was, was, w- w- we all came together in the policy meeting, there was a lot of overuse of our facilities from many different directions, um, and I think we got, we got really far from, from the point of that. Uh, I don't think that there's any, you know, personal attack that's ever, you know, and I don't want anybody to feel like, anything was directed in any particular way towards any person, uh, but I do feel like we're sitting here talking about the budget and rising costs, and, you know, the reality of the situation is, you know, we're facing them as well, and where do we get the money, right? Um, and we have to consider all of these factors, um, and obviously, we don't want to put age ten in your, uh, you know, your budget and, and the things that you do, I, I appreciate as a parent, all the programs you do, the tennis, my kids love the tennis and swim, so I thank you very much for your efforts there, and I hope that we can figure out, you know, a way for this to work for, for everyone, um, and...
I think our compromise, if I remember correctly, was that we were going to waive the fee...
The usage fee.
The usage fee, because we realized that this came after your budget planning, so that was our compromise at the meeting.
Yeah, and as I stated, I, I didn't come here tonight to go ahead and reengage in this. This wasn't an attempt to go ahead and be like, let's overturn.
Brendan said that we're doing what's right, like, like they said, are we gonna open up our shop, are we gonna open up the robotics, are we gonna open up? There's so many things that I, I've said a thousand times, there's classes that I would love to take in the school because they're so interesting, and they never offered when I was in high school. There's just so much that the school offers now, um, and the gym is just one small part, so...
The gym, we spent a lot of money on the gym to redo the floors, to re...
So, that's actually a question I have, you say you spent twenty-six thousand, thirty thousand dollars on materials. I mean, none of those materials, basketball, we're basically, we're using all our brain and blood, all of our basketball, basketballs are...
The heat, the lights are staying on, the heat is staying on, the...
I mean, there's no percentage of your budget that's coming back to the school for wear and tear or anything like that, so...
But, but, that's...
Does that affect your, what's on?
No, I completely understand that, and the thing is, I am not here to go ahead and reengage in this.
Yeah, we just called them up.
I was called up, and now it just seems as though we're kind of, we're beating a dead horse at this point.
So...
I think my, my only, honestly, my only contention at the beginning of this was that this was a policy that was brought into effect after my budget cycle had completed, after we had gone ahead and advertised and said, we're still running our programs. Had I been aware that there would have been a fee prior to it, then yes, I think it would be okay to say, this is what it's gonna cost you to play basketball at the region at this point. But, to go ahead and change the rules of the game mid-game, it made it difficult to go ahead and pass that, um, bill along to the taxpayers at that point.
When was the policy approved? When was he notified the policy changed? Kyle, do you remember, was it September, October?
I know, or...
It was summer.
It was prior to summer.
It was, it was prior to school, it was prior to school year.
Mm-hmm, and our budget process was before that.
Did you already have flyers go out for the adult pro- adult basketball league saying it was free?
It's always been that way, and...
Just because it's always been that way, I've...
I understand, but again, I just, I'm not quite comprehending why we're going down this path again.
No, I just wanted to make sure, I just, because it wasn't bef- that's all I wanted to know is if leagues were created, that's all, I was just trying to clarify when it was passed, so thank you.
Let's move on.
Okay, thank you. So, does anybody want to make a motion?
Do we need one?
No, if anybody wants to change, make any changes, I'm not making a motion.
I don't think we need a motion, because it was just to address this, like you said, he's only here as a bu- as a witness, or...
No, if, because if someone wants to make a motion to reconsider, and that's all, that's all, I, I am not making a motion, so, okay. Thank you so much for your time, I am sorry if there was any misunderstanding about, I appreciate your time coming, and thank your efforts, you too, thank you. Okay.
Poor guy, he just...
All right, consideration, signage in schools, I asked this to be on the agenda because I received a picture that you sent.
That wasn't from me.
No, no, it wasn't from you, it was from a taxpayer.
Yes.
From a taxpayer, and it...
Taxpayer sent it to me, I sent it to you.
Yep, so it was a Black Lives Matter sign in the school, I sent it to Mary Ann, asked if this, because this to me seems inappropriate, it seems political. She got back to me and got legal opinion. Mary Ann, please go.
Okay, so, let me just start off by saying, um, probably about seven years ago, we were asked the same question in another district, whether a vote for Black Lives Matter was a political sign. At the time, this was before George Floyd, this was before everything kind of happened, our opinion was that it was not political, and therefore, you could not ask something to... However, back to, back to the Floyd incident, everything kind of heated up, it became more of an involved sign, it became more of a controversial sign. So, based on the, um, the research that we did in my office, based on the price of litigation, um, it's my opinion that the Black Lives Matter sign is a political sign, and therefore, you can ask something to legal, from law.
So, okay, so the consensus of the committee is that I would like to, do I need a vote to do this?
No, I'm just telling you the point, it's a discussion, it's a political sign, we have to, superintendent, to ask.
So, I would like to give a directive to the superintendent to notify all teachers and staff that any political signs, including Black Lives Matter, are not to be posted in their classrooms.
Agree? Do I have to make a motion, or is that...
Nope, I'm just asking for a directive to be given.
No, as a teacher, you, I, she probably kind of knew, and if she didn't know, now she will know.
Lieutenant is going to say it's a political sign, please take it.
So, we're gonna use this as an example, no political signs are gonna be used.
We're gonna say in general to everyone.
A taxpayer.
Oh, a child's, a chi- a student sent a picture to the father, the father took a picture, send it to me.
And then Cindy sent it to me.
And then Shelley sent it to me and asked for an opinion. And my initial, my initial, yeah, my initial opinion was, no, it's fine.
And I'm like, this is racist.
No, my initial reaction was, it's a sign, it's fine, all lives matter, doesn't matter.
Yeah, no.
She had the opposite view, she took, made the decision, take it down, we follow her.
I made my legal, I didn't make the decision.
So, directive, consensus staff.
Well, you, you didn't make a decision, you gave us your opinion.
It works for all signs.
All signs, all political signs, if it's not, you can't, you know, they do not belong in the classroom.
We don't, we don't need president, president countdowns on the whiteboard.
No, no, we don't, exactly, that either.
Yeah.
So, is this, was this with social studies question? No.
I think it was math.
Art.
Art.
Yeah, so, please give a directive, and with that as an example, and you know who this teacher is, so make sure they get, can we just...
I think it's a good idea, as we're approaching twenty...
To check? Yes, I think we should check, and I think they all need to be notified. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, uh...
Capital projects.
Capital projects. Brendan, Steve, who's that? Are you gonna duke it out?
Thirteen, nearly, nearly, nearly eighteen.
There is a fair one inside all the Grand Country pads going back out the bit. Uh, and the approval of CTE construction vehicle bid, so we would like to go with, ultimately, I don't know, review the, open the packet, hopefully, the one from for base four, such as the third page, the given vehicle we were looking for. Um, the one from flood four, from Mike Lancia, is the incorrect color, it's way too flashy, and ultimately, we really want to keep our fleet vehicles all white, so we can put our Mon against emblem on the vehicles, so it's clearly identified when it's out on our public streets. It was a dark metallic gray, it looked like somebody's personal, personal vehicle path, so hopefully...
But those were like bright yellow or something, you said flashy.
Oh, I thought white was a big cheetah right down the door.
Okay, good.
Ultimately, we'd like to move forward with, uh, the quote on top of the front page, the fifty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-three, uh, thirty dollars from Paddle World Club.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
How many bids do we get?
Three or four?
Ultimately, I, uh, let's put it this way, from the time this process started in the best, from November till now, I probably got quotes on close to eight to ten vehicles, and the problem is the length of time, the vehicles just...
They're going out, they're not available.
Correct, especially with the, the end of the year, that just...
Uh, yeah.
Small vehicles were just, like, sold, so...
Bless you.
Or just, you're tracked down too, and maybe exactly what we're looking for.
Perfect, good, so, there was a so moved, there was a second, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. All right.
I don't respond to the ministry flag that Steve said that the Inside Out grant bids are gonna go back out to bid.
Yeah, you have that, yeah. Did we need a motion, uh, did we make a motion on that?
No, he just said it, he passed it out.
Do we need a motion for that? Because you have one on the page.
That was legally...
You need a motion to table, so, and do we go up, you need a motion to table this, and you go up to...
I make a motion to table the concrete bid for the Inside Out grant as presented, and, um, put it back out to bid.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose abstentions, okay.
Subcommittee.
Um, so we just did the vehicle bid, is there anything else in the capital project, Steve? Anything else for the capital projects?
Uh, nothing.
Beautiful.
We have the graduation diploma.
All right, policy subcommittee, um, I make a motion to approve the graduation diploma system policy as a second reading.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Yeah, I said, I just have one, one quick thing, um, what?
Oh, we're excited to hear it. Oh, we're excited to hear it.
Oh. Didn't sound like it.
Yeah, it sounded like, it sounded like...
Oh, great. Um, so obviously the passion project, I don't really know, I, I, I know I did a senior exhibition, right? But I think it's been a while and it's probably changed a lot. I didn't know if maybe we could get some sort of like quick presentation on like what the passion, passion project is, like what the expectations are of the student, how it's changed, like things like that. Especially if it's something that's required from every senior.
Okay.
Like maybe at the next meeting.
All right, so just to be clear though, you're not concerned that it's in here, so we're good with the policy. You're just looking for more information on what the passion project is, and okay, yeah, we, um...
Well, do you want to hear about it before you approve this as a policy?
No, no, I have no concern with the policy. I guess it's more, this is more of a sidebar. Well, I think it, I think it has to...
Does it have to be in the policy?
No, no. This is, this is more of a sidebar type thing, but it was part of it. Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay. So we'll put that in February.
Future agenda.
Okay.
Okay. So there was a motion, there was a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Public comment? There's no public here. All right, with that being said, communication to and or from members of the school committee?
Other than the picture and the town council letter, we're good.
Okay.
I just, can I just say, uh, I was excited to see the, the new CTE program thing.
Yes.
Uh, I, I, um, I don't know, I, I didn't know that was in the process and that was pretty exciting to see come out.
So we're hoping to have that, um, presentation team in February. We have a lot more information since the approval came very quickly. We didn't expect approval then.
Okay.
What, what were they?
Fire sign.
The education program and firefighting.
They got approved?
Yes, we didn't expect approval so quickly. So you are going to have a presentation in February that will have...
Can we use existing staff or do we have to?
We have existing staff.
Beautiful. Okay, good.
Yep, because you already have to have some of those programs in place and you approved this year. Uh, we have a firefighting course already in place and Mr. Stanley has secured funding for that through grant that will cover what we need. And I just had an interesting conversation with him today. I will not share what that conversation was, I'm going to keep you in suspense until February, but it's going to be pretty awesome. So that is on the agenda for...
No, it's very cool. I just, I was also curious if there's any others that are in the works that you don't, okay.
Like, like plumbing or electrical or something.
Yeah, that's what I'm curious about.
Or hands-on, crazy.
To be, to be continued.
Program. A whole big pathway certification of it.
Was there any progress with conferences?
Uh, I'm meeting with Mr. Retungo Thursday. Yes.
Thank you, Eileen. Anything else? We're good? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions. Beautiful. Thank you.
Happy New Year, guys, thank you. Thanks for having us.